Yeah, that would be my perspective.
Well, I'm always confused when it goes into something that wasn't something that is and will be. And then, oh, wait a minute, all of a sudden he's a pre-attrition and he's so cute with that little girl. And then all of a sudden, and she is calling him and enough concentration. And she wants to know where to put those paintings and how to get them. I think this is kind of crazy. What's it gonna do with it?
Yeah, I started with you. I had a great cinematography, good acting, weird story. And I think if you go in expecting that it's gonna be a weird story, that might help. If you go in cold, it can be a bit off putting. And not everybody likes the jumping in time, back and forth and back and forth. You know, some movies use gimmicks. This one didn't really. I mean, color was really important. Not just the beautiful color, but color was really important. His color was blue, her color was red. Institutionally, she was always in green. So, and then their color was purple, which is the blending of the red and the blue.
I completely missed that.
You know, you've got those things playing through, you know, you look for... Some do that, some don't. This one really relied a lot on it. And hell had no color.
That's right. So I just want to remind you, we're videotaping this.
The calendar said 7:30, did you know? Yes, it did. It did.
Oh, my bad then. Oh, I wonder...
Actually, my calendar said 7:32, but then I figured out...
Yeah, and I thought that seemed odd.
Should I lock the door?
Yeah, but no, I locked it. It was locked.
Okay, okay. So I forgot to mention, well, that might help us. So I forgot to mention, I'm gonna videotape this because I know Sheila wanted to be here but couldn't. We were talking about Dell not being able to make it. She called, and Diane can't make it. So I knew... Sorry?
Epps.
Epps, and you know what? Now I'm beginning to wonder if it's 7:13, I'm gonna keep going.
Well, yeah, like I didn't, I realized I didn't look at the bulletin, because the calendar was there.
Oh, man.
And so I didn't look at the bulletin again.
Yeah, well, we'll find out. So, Moira, just to be transparent, I looked at the crowd at 7:02 and I thought, I guess I picked the wrong movie. So what we're doing is going around and sharing our reaction to that. But I want to go back to Larry, what Larry mentioned. So, you all know this from watching movies. Nothing in a movie is by accident. There's not a frame, not a character, not an object in that movie that isn't there by design on purpose. So in that frame, everything is there for a reason, and the colors matter. And can you explain the colors again?
So not the fact that it's overall very colorful, Moira. It was that his color, he always wore blue and anything that seemed to really be his scenes had a blue theme, or the blue flowers. You saw lots of blue flowers at the beginning when kids...
It was very dim.
The Van Gogh boy, it was blue. And her colors were red, except in the end when she joins him. At the end, she's wearing blue, then the next scene she's wearing red. So it's back into his scene. And purple is their color, because it's a blend of the two. And then whenever she was in the institution, she was in green. So whatever the significance is of the green, maybe growth, I'm gonna guess.
Life.
Life, yeah.
You know, it's supposed to be that. So I want to come back to Gary. Gary, you started. Did you finish what you wanted to say in terms of your reaction?
Yep.
Okay. So we've got, Moira, just to bring it up to speed, we've had reactions from cold, I hated it, to I liked it. Can we ask you for your reaction?
It was very strange.
Very, yes, weird, strange, yeah. Yeah, I know. And the reason I was explaining, the reason I picked it was I knew there would be reactions. And that's what it was designed to do. Plus, it's a springboard to go on to talk. So what I'm gonna do with this is, we've got a total of four sessions. Today is kind of the introduction, and we'll kind of take some time to talk about what the Bible says heaven is and what it isn't. We'll do the same thing in the second section on hell. And then the last session, session four, will be an in-depth study of the order in which events happen after we die, biblically speaking. Okay. So, let's see here. Yeah. So just some observations. Somebody mentioned, there's a conversation between Chris Chittle, the first guide, and Robin Williams' character, where they're looking out a window. And Robin asks, "Where is God?" And his guide just looks up into the sky and says, "He's out there somewhere." But it's interesting that the movie actually has a person to be the guide when he first gets there. I thought that was interesting because when you think about the scriptures and the way the Bible talks about who Jesus is, there's always the promise of the Savior to come. So right after the fall into sin, God tells Adam and Eve, "I'm going to send you a Savior." And then he spends, depending on who you read, 1500 to 1800 years of sending the prophets to tell them about who this Jesus will be. And it's, I love Christmas because it's the incarnation. I hear another car. Wow, yeah, 7:30. That's probably, yeah, you remember?
I know.
So...
Careful.
Yeah? So, you end up with God sending, and I've mentioned this previous times in sermons. We used to tell the boys, "Jesus is God with skin on." He has the same nails as you do, the same skin. And Brayden would always laugh and say, "But I bet you you had a full head of hair, Dad." And this is when I had a receding hairline. So, the thing is, it's all about the personal with God. And that's what makes the miracle of Christmas such a miracle. It's that all these words were humanized. Now, this is very interesting. So that God would become a human. In all of literature and in all of other religions, and especially Greek mythology, the humans always wanted to ascend to become like gods. And God decided to become one of us. And then, you know, he took upon himself our sin, Honeos, all that. I'll stop because I feel a sermon coming on, so I'll stop. So the personal guide through heaven. Larry, you mentioned, you know, the morphing of the characters into the kids. So remember, the two kids died, and at the beginning of the movie, there's the discussion of, "Where are my kids?" Well, you'll see them eventually when you want to see them. And so the Asian woman comes to be with, what's his...
Chris.
Chris. Chris. And eventually it turns out that's his daughter. And then later on, the Chris Chittle character, the first guide, morphs into his son. The human part of being in, and then the whole scene of him trying to reach out to his wife. And you'll remember, the wedding was in that big cathedral. And when they get to the journey where he's trying to get back down to hell, or to hell, it's the upside-down cupola that they're climbing over, those big ribs. And I'm thinking, that was, I mean, you've all heard the expression, you know, sometimes there's a heaven on earth and there's a hell on earth too. And I thought of that when I saw that scene. All right.
So now you know what to look for, which isn't...
Yeah, yeah, I want to be careful because, as the kids say these days, no spoilers. I don't want to say anything that's gonna give away too much, but I kind of have to. So, other things. What was the heaven like here? Who was there? What did you...
Who's heaven?
Who's heaven? Yeah?
Because they made that clear too, that heaven and hell are unique to the individual. Or at least initially. You know, his transition from looking inward and all learning to accept it, to looking outward and then finally being able to accept it and see the character that was his daughter and then his son and others. Yeah, the heaven was and hell was. It would be very clear between he and his daughter, and their heaven is what the individual would perceive it as. So that's why his was like painting with his wife.
The dog made it to heaven, you know? There was a conversation between the mother and the daughter about the dog dying. They had to put it to sleep, you know, all that kind of stuff. And that dog ends up in Chris's heaven. The heaven reminded me of a lot of those paintings. And you've all seen them. I don't know if you've ever seen like a Vincent van Gogh painting in real life. Have any of you? Okay.
Maybe, but I wouldn't remember.
Oh, you'd remember.
We were in Lisbon and saw all kinds of big master, but there was so much you could...
Yeah, yeah. So years ago, in Regina, a little over Regina, they brought in an exhibition of seven Impressionist-era painters, paintings. So some Degas, Monet, Manet, Vincent van Gogh. And my brother Ron, who is an artist and took a bachelor of fine arts from the University of Manitoba, I told him I was going to see this, and they had seven paintings. And he said, "Okay, is there gonna be any van Gogh?" "Yeah." So I told him which one. It was the, no, was it the flowers? Yes. The irises, the sunflowers, one of the sunflowers. And so he said, "Okay, I know that painting. I've seen it." Or one of, he did a series of them. So he said, "What you want to do is look at it from the front like, you know, everybody else does. But what you need to do is try and get to the side. And hopefully they won't have a stupid frame on it." They didn't, which was good. So you go to the side, and the paint sticks out like half an inch because of the kind of paint he was using. Some kind of new acrylic or something.
Being wild, wouldn't it?
I don't know.
A lot of them mix their own paints.
Yeah.
Their own formulas or their own secret formula.
Right. I don't know. But it was, what the end result was, when you looked at it from the side, you could tell the contour. You could see the brushstrokes, and you could see the different heights of the different strokes. And he said, "You need to see it that way because..." Try and imagine what it was like for Vincent van Gogh to use that medium and paint that way. You couldn't mix it too thin or too thick. He mixed it just the right amount. The reason I'm telling you all that depth stuff is when you watch the movie, you saw how he was walking through and falling, and they were scraping stuff all over the place with the paint. Remember all that? That's where that came from. This movie really, pardon me, relies on references to past literature and paintings. So the painting, you know, that thick, and the painting, as he's walking through parts of it, you can hear it. It's almost like, it's squishing, like actually grabbing paint. And then the wider big landscapes come from an English painter. And I can't remember. I'll have to look. I'll ask my brother. Gainsborough, that's it, Gainsborough, who did these huge canvases of landscapes of the English countryside. And so that's where the inspiration for those paintings come from. How many of you have read Dante's Inferno?
I'll make bets.
Me too. I haven't read the whole thing. But I've studied it, you've all heard of it, and you all know it because that's where the same, the rings of hell, the circles of hell comes from. And my contention is that our view of hell in today's, in our churches today, is not so much from the Bible, but taken from Dante's Inferno. Because the Bible talks about hell being a place like, a lake of fire. It never says it will be. It's all metaphor. So, and even in the Old Testament, the Old Testament, what the Bible says about hell in the Old Testament is different even a little bit than in the New Testament. And we'll get into that when we get to that particular study. So I thought, what might be good is, if I'm gonna... So Dante's Inferno is a long-form poem in Italian that essentially is his story of his journey to hell with a Greek poet named Virgil. And the Italians, as you know, loved the Greek philosophers and anything to do with Greece. They copied the architecture, the artwork, all of that. And so, and remember, what did the Greeks write? The...
The Iliad?
The Iliad. And what's the other one? The Odyssey, those long-form poetry. So kids these days, and I know because we have them, were really into the Harry Potter books. Remember, the first one was like that thin. As they exploded in popularity, they became thicker. And then the movies went with them. And the last book was divided up into two movies because Hollywood sees a gold mine and milks it for all it's worth. Long, long story. In the seventies, or was it the forties, fifties? In the seventies, there was a resurgence of a book called Lord of the Rings. And now, in the last 20 years, they made the movies. And our boys just hook, line, and sinker into Lord of the Rings and the Harry Potter. So this long form of literature is not just prevalent in our time, but you can go back into history, especially English lit. So Beowulf, the first long, Chaucer's Canterbury Tales. Milton wrote Paradise Lost and Paradise Regained. Dante's Inferno is a lot like Paradise Lost and Paradise Regained. This is divided into three. His journey into hell, his time in purgatory, very Italian, and not in the Bible. And then his paradisio, which is paradise. So this examination of a movie like this is based on historical predecessors. And that's what great art does. You all know this from music, from art. No, there's nothing new under the sun. There's original music, but it's always based on something that goes before it. So the Beatles, Paul McCartney, there's a video on YouTube somewhere where Paul McCartney is playing a song done by Little Richard. And he says, "Yeah, we used to sing it that way, but when we get this song, we played a little bit of that and then stuck in a different chord to make it just a little bit different, but original." And that's what all of this does. So Dante's Inferno is this journey of Dante where Virgil, the poet of Greek renown, takes him through. So there's, and it's about that thick, you know? And then there's, and again, all this art and literature go hand in hand. There is a company, so that was written in the 16th century. In the 18th, 19th century, an artist named Gustave Doree drew pencil drawings of all of these images that come in Dante's Inferno. And once you see, I've got two of them, and once you see them, you'll recognize them as the movie lifting them essentially and adapting them for the movie from these drawings. It's astounding.
Talking about Albrecht Dürer?
No, not Dürer. This is Doree, but in the same kind of woodcut tradition. All right. So this worked 10 minutes ago. Let me see if I can...
What about Job? Isn't it also kind of a long...
Oh, thank you for reminding me. So, yes. Job is hugely long and addresses the idea of suffering. In fact, there are people who argue that it's, you know, you got the books of Moses. Job goes back a long way and serves as that classic story of suffering and redemption. And it's one of those long-form ones as well. So Gustave Doree and his woodcuts. Okay, I don't know if you... Yeah, that's... So you can see, remember the scene where they're walking on the faces? So there's a scene where they're trying to, he's trying to get back, or he's trying to go to hell. They have to go through a journey. They go on a river.
Styx, per se?
Banksy, say it. What is Styx?
Styx.
What is that? Yeah.
The dividing line between Hades and, or the underworld.
The river Styx in Greek literature is that, yeah, the dividing line between that and hell, Hades. And the way they tie everything together, it's just glorious when you think of all of that. So here's the scene where Virgil and Dante are looking at the souls of the dead who are suffering in misery, and in the movie, it's just, you know, thousands of faces. And so as they come upon them, they can hear what they're saying. And what did you say? Sorry, sorry for stepping on them?
When you step, yeah. And they say, "Help me."
Yeah, and "help me, help me."
I thought it was his father.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Papa?
Papa, yeah, it wasn't.
Did you hear anything else? Remember, nothing in a movie is by accident. Any other dialogue you remember. So, this paint, this woodcut, the description is they're looking over the sea in one of the, it's not quite a ring of hell, but this particular part of the river or the lake is reserved because in Dante's Inferno, there's nine rings of hell. And they get closer to the fire. And it goes from least of the sinners to the worst of the sinners, the closer you get. This particular area is reserved for fraudsters and cheats.
There's one woman who is saying something about, well, she only did such and such. "I only stole so much," or whatever.
"I only stole 30% from every client. Never anymore." And I'm laughing.
Sounds particularly like her tax collector.
Yes. And I'm laughing because whoever wrote this movie knew their literature. And to stick that in is brilliant in terms of movie making. So you can see, you know, what they've done in the movie. They kind of lifted it from this, but that's okay because they made it original in the movie. It was a different way of showing it in a cinematographic, in a film way.
And it really doesn't matter because there's gonna be an acknowledgement of the public that will connect to that. So, you know, lifting it and using it, like the cerebrus in the gate, on the ship.
Right. Yeah, and you know what? I shouldn't use those terms, lifting it.
No, well, no, they are.
Yeah.
But it's intentional and intentionally hoping that an acknowledgement of some of the public will recognize it and make the connection to, that's what the scene is showing. Because it not being, you know, clever, being too cute squared, it's intentional.
And it's done all the time in art, in music, in literature.
Artists used to be a musician, used to be proud when some of their works were used for somebody else. Now it's, you know...
Yeah.
Especially when they're on purpose. Ruining you.
So then, I'll give you another scene. This is, again, you know, the souls of the dead. And I wanted to show this because it's similar to the other one, but just a wee bit different. This one has color. And he hardly ever used, I've got the book.
Yeah, it's interesting whether that's intentional.
Who knows?
To this version of a painting, who knows?
But I just, so I've got the book that has, so I've got Dante's Inferno, the text, but I also have the artwork, you know?
My copy has it too. I haven't looked at it in so many years, I've got to haul it out now.
And so just a little, you know, growing up, my godparents, they were very religious people. I learned a lot about my faith from both of them. But, and my parents latched on to them because they were here, emigrated from Germany and Poland, just like they did. And we didn't have a whole lot of extended family because it was just our family, nobody else, blood-related. So all of our family was, you know, relational, related. Anyway, so we'd go over to their place for, they would alternate. One Easter would be at our home, one Easter would be at their home. Christmas, same thing. We'd alternate every year. So whenever we went to their place, as I grew up, I started noticing, you know, this stuff that was in the living room. They had a phenomenal stereo. Every Easter, they would put on The Messiah, and we'd have supper. And the afternoon, just yakking about whatever, but The Messiah would be playing in the background. Above the speakers, and I have no clue why, but there were all these, there were at least four or five of these painting, of these line drawings in the living room as artwork. And it's only recently that I, it finally dawned on me that my godparents had representations of hell in their living room. And I have no idea what that means. I have, anyway, so, all right, let me keep going. All right, I think, wait, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back. Yeah, okay, I'll leave that out. Okay. So biblically, anything else anybody wants to say about the movie itself? Okay. So now what we want to do, we kind of have an idea of what the heaven is in the movie. It's, there's a personal guide. It's your own version. You create it. You fill in the blanks. It's squishy, based on his wife's love of artwork. It's squishy, based on his wife's love of artwork and his desire to see. The house, cause the house eventually emerges later on.
But the daughter's heaven is completely different.
Yes.
Yeah.
For those that haven't haven't seen it, it's a a different kind of fantasy, I don't even know how to describe it, but it's almost, almost like fairies and. And, uh, yeah, with all kinds of people floating and flying and, and very whimsical. But she died, yeah, exactly, she died, what was your?
No, well, one of the drive.
So.
Well, she would have aged, have aged.
Not in heaven.
In Hollywood, of course.
Her character didn't. They could, they could like, um. Why? Of course, the mentor, we thought was a young man, but it turned out it was somebody completely different, so. We, you know, and and they kind of alluded to, or that was a story they told Chris, that you can be kind of who you want to be. But how can you go forward to something you've never been? If you go, uh, like if you play that, you could go back to something you were, but you can't go forward to something you've never been.
Yeah, right. And you're right, Moira, that, the girl's version of heaven was based on that. Mo- mobile or? That she had in her bedroom. Remember, and and what I was remember is the flying, the pretty, that. Whatever it was, the woman that was flying across the room, it was both in the painting, sorry, in her heaven. And in her bedroom on that, I don't know what else to call it, but a mobile. So, um. You know that the Bible, and I'm gonna contend that. The biblical view, when we think of paradise. Um, the biblical view, the the view that we all have of heaven is not based on the Bible. But it's based on. The 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 nurses who told the soldiers, and there's lots of articles about this. The the stories that the, the hope that nurses gave to. Soldiers during the civil war to talk about paradise coming. Because you'll recall from the American Civil War, that was where the musket was invented. And the musket, like all instruments of war, is a horrible blunt instrument. If you got shot by a musket, it wasn't shot, you know, when you think of a shotgun, little pellets, it was a big old ball. And it could take your arm off. And so you've seen movies and pictures where. The soldiers are all bandaged up with missing limbs and. All those kind of things, and those nurses told them, someday you'll be in paradise and all this will be over, there will be no more suffering. It will be filled with eternal joy. So put that in your mind for a moment, we'll come back to that. Um, Bible has a curious way of describing heaven, a lot of books have been written about it, as you know. Um, but they're mostly speculation. Often based on symbolic descriptions of gold paved streets and gates made of pearl, the pearly gates. Now, those two references, pearly gates and the streets made of gold, um, are. True, that part's true. But after that, um, there are a lot of people who would say. The Bible describes heaven mostly in negative terms. Now, bear with me, negative doesn't always mean bad. The Bible. And when, when, and you'll see this, the Bible talks about heaven in terms of what it isn't. And hell is talked about in terms of what it is. So I'll come back to that. It's heaven in the Bible is almost always described as a place completely free. Of all that makes life on earth so hard. That's, you could argue that's a negative. And I don't mean negative in a connotation that's bad, but negative as in without. So, um, let's do something wild and crazy. Let's open our Bibles. To Revelation, chapter twenty-one, verses three and four. What did I say, Revelation twenty-one, three and four? Okay, so let's read. That passage. Revelation twenty-one, three and four, whoever's got, just read it.
I heard a loud voice from the throne saying, now the dwelling of God is with men, men, and he will live with them. They will be his people and God himself would be with them and be their God. He will wipe every tear away from their eyes. There will be no more death or mourning or crying or pain, for the old order of things has passed away.
Alright, what do you glean from that about heaven?
Starting at the end, it's a new order.
It's a new order.
With eliminating all the things that we in the human world, you know? Avoid, try to avoid.
Yeah.
Always the pain, death, mourning. Anything that causes sadness.
Right. Anything causes, that causes sadness, grief, suffering, um, you know?
But will also be in the presence of God.
We'll, we'll get to that. Um, and actually, yes, cause it, Larry, you know, like you said, start at the back, at the bottom end. Um, new order, no more pain, suffering, um, tears will be wiped away. This passage is such a good one at funerals. And and I, I think we read it just about every time. But I I love it because of all of that. Um, they will be his people and God himself will be with them and be their God. Remember in the Old Testament, when Moses, how did Moses first see God? In the burning bush. And, you know, how does that go in the, um, in the movie, the Ten Commandments? You're on hallowed ground now, um, take your sandals off and. The scriptures tell us that no one will see the face of God and live. And that's why God hid himself in that burning bush. And Paul talks about that, you know, though we now see dimly. We will see him in full. Job.
I mean, not seeing God, but being in. The, yeah, region, I don't know how to describe it, cause he's in the presence of God.
Yeah.
Mo- isn't, isn't Moses, he has to hide himself for a period of time because he's glowing.
Yeah.
So much.
Yeah, after he comes back.
Uh, wait to go and see them. This relates again.
And think of Job, you know, you mentioned Job. You know, I, I know that my redeemer is, my redeemer lives, and in my flesh I will see him. You know, so be in the presence of God without dying.
There's a transformation anyway.
Yeah.
Like Jesus too, when he.
Yeah.
Comes back from praying.
Right. And we'll talk about the resurrection of the body and how the body and the, um, spirit, soul come together. Um, on the day of judgment, so we'll get to that, but that's not till the end. Spoiler alert, that's how it ends, but see, I shouldn't have done that. So, um. They will be his people, God himself will be with them and be their God. He will wipe away every tear from their eyes. And so. When Milton wrote Paradise Lost, it was about to fall into sin. Paradise regained is the ascent to heaven. So the Book of Genesis, there's a paradise, right? And and we're kind of, so heaven, we're thinking about heaven now, there's a tree of life in in, um. The the Old Testament, there's a tree of life mentioned in the Book of Revelation. And this idea of the new heaven and the new earth. So God created the world and it was very good, he says. And then creation goes downhill with the fall into sin. And our next home will be a new order, a new heaven, a new earth. And it will be perfect as it was intended to be from the beginning. So paradise lost, paradise regained, it's all there. Okay, let's keep, so, you know, like I said, um, new creation, um, and again. It's what heaven isn't, um, or what it doesn't have, it doesn't have pain and suffering. Alright, um, let's see here. Now let's look at, um, Revelation seven. Fifteen to seventeen, Revelation seven, fifteen to seventeen.
Therefore they are before the throne of God and serve him day and night in his temple. And he who sits on the throne will shelter them with his presence. They shall hunger no more, neither thirst anymore. The sun shall not strike them, nor any scorching heat. For the lamb in the midst of the throne will be their shepherd, and he will guide them to springs of living water. And God will wipe away every tear from their eyes.
Okay, so this, now we're starting to expand what heaven is and what it isn't, um. He will, he who sits on the throne will spread his tent over them, um, the tent of protection and covering. Never again will they hunger, never again will they thirst. So that's an allusion, a reference back to the words of Jesus. You know, if you eat of the bread of life, you will never hunger, drink of the water of life, you will never thirst.
So we can ask?
Please, absolutely, yeah.
I have my, my head around this, to serve him, what does that mean? I mean, God has no need?
Say that again, what was it?
They serve him.
Okay, yeah. So, basically, um, when you think about. So we're thinking about what heaven will be like, what will it be like to, you know what, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that. I don't know the answer right now, but I will bring back an answer.
And to me, I would rather be in the Garden of Eden.
Okay.
Than in this golden crystal. Somehow that doesn't appeal to me.
And that's, I find that interesting, because I think that's what the movie is trying to show, that he, uh, what is heaven for, you know? It sounds very, fairly antiseptic, doesn't it, in this, in this crystals, streets of gold and then. There's another description, I believe, in.
To me, nothing to do with is the worst punishment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So don't forget, um. At the end, near the end of this passage, it says. For the lamb at the center of the throne will be their shepherd, he will lead them to springs of living water. So I think of Psalm twenty-three, you know, you got the 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 green grass, the springs of living water, all those kind of things. Um, when you're reading the Book of Revelation, you have to remember, it's all symbolic language. And metaphor and simile. So will heaven be paved with literal streets of gold? Likely not, real gold. But like heaven, or like streets of gold and. You know, um.
Best of all, it's precious, I can see that.
Right. And that's essentially what it is, Renata, that's, it's symbolic language. To try and evoke the notion that this is the best thing ever.
Yeah, and it's what we treasure the most here is only worth walking on there.
Yeah. So there, now you're reminding me of an old joke. So a very rich man dies and goes to heaven. And he gets the pearly gates. And he ends up, they have a conversation, Saint Peter and Mary have a conversation. Saint Peter looks at him and says, what do you got back there? And, you know, he's got a car. What are you bringing your car for? Well, they said you can't take it with you, but I'm gonna try. So Saint Peter says, no, you can't, it's not gonna work, you can't bring it with you, you know that. Well, please, please, and so there is a begging thing that goes on, and. Finally, Saint Peter is just dying of cru- curiosity. And he says, listen, before I let you in with this car. Can you open up the trunk and show me what's so valuable in there that you wanna bring it with you? And the guy dutifully opens it up, and the trunk of the car is filled with gold bars. And Saint Peter looks at the guy and says, you brought pavement? And so, you you know. As we're thinking about these things. The value, you know, Jesus talks about this. Don't bother storing up for yourselves riches that are only gonna rot. So then you think about, um, all those pharaohs. And how ornately they were buried, you know, in the, that gold casing and. All of those kind of things, and what happens? It rots away and people steal it. And, you know, it just doesn't last. Okay, so let's look at Genesis one, verse thirty-one, please. Genesis one, verse thirty-one.
Well, you're going stem to stern.
We are.
One thirty-one, you said?
One, verse thirty-one.
God saw all the, that he had made and it was very good. And there was evening, and there was morning the sixth day.
So in Genesis, as the creation account unfolds. God created this on the first day, this on the second day, and you'll notice that at the end of the day. It always says, and it was very good. So when you talk to Jewish rabbis and their teaching methods. They're interested in what we would call the moral of the story. What's the life lesson? And for the Jewish rabbi, it wasn't just practical. Although the Jewish religion is a very practical religion. But it was also about, what's the theology behind this? What's the theo- what's the God message? That's trying to be taught here. And so when the Jewish rabbis read this over and over again, where it says, and God saw that it was very good. That was the lesson they felt was the most important part of Genesis, at least the the creation account. God saw the world was very good, and it was. Prior to the fall, it is paradise. God walked with Adam and Eve. In the cool of the morning, I love that. And then it all goes to, well, what do we say these days? Heck, Hades, hell, um, because of sin. Sin corrupts this perfect plan of God. And brings heartache and pain. Into our lives, to Adam and Eve's lives, and then it wrecks their paradise. They get thrown out of the garden. Um, the first Adam brought sin into the world, second Adam, Jesus removes sin. And its consequences from God's creation. Now that's interesting, because, you know, sin brings pain, um, and suffering into the world. The second Adam brings comfort and relief and redemption from sin. Uh, let's see here. Romans eight, verse eighteen to twenty-one, please. Romans eight, eighteen. Romans eight, eighteen to twenty-one. So Paul makes the comparison here between this earthly life and the life that is to come in heaven. Somebody please read that. It was, um, Romans eight, eighteen to twenty-one.
I consider that what we suffer at this present time cannot be compared at all with the glory that is going to be revealed to us. All of creation waits with eager longing for God to reveal his sons. For, for creation was condemned to lose its purpose, not of its own will, but because God willed it to be so. Yet there was the hope that creation itself would one day be set free from its slavery to decay and would share the glorious freedom of the children of God.
Thank you. This is some good stuff about heaven. Um, I consider our present sufferings are not worth comparing with the glory that will be revealed in us. So yeah, there's suffering, um, as a result of, um, the consequences of sin. And I don't need to tell you, um, how prevalent suffering is in our world. The creation waits in eager expectation for the sons of God to be revealed. So this idea of creation longing for, um, the eternity to come and the comfort and the joy that will come. The creation was subjected to frustration, not by its own choice. Here's something interesting, but by the will of the one who subjected it. Who's that? The will of the one who subjected it. That would be Satan. Who subjected the world by his lies, deceived the world in the hope that the creation itself will be liberated from its bondage to decay and brought into the glorious freedom of the children of God. So the idea here is that even though we fell into sin, nevertheless, God's plan has given us redemption from all of that. He buys us back. Because now, on this side of the grave, we live post-fall in sin. And now we look forward to the time when this will all be made right, when everything will be reconciled to God. So to be in heaven is to return to the original plan of God. Heaven is God's return ticket to Eden. Remember how they were barred? There's an angel guarding the entrance? Heaven, sorry, to gain heaven is to live in paradise and enjoy everything that God originally planned before sin ruined everything. And when God walked with Adam and Eve in the, in the Old Testament, in the Garden of Eden, that's what he did. And in heaven, God will walk with us as he did with Adam and Eve prior to the fall. And we will experience complete fellowship with the Heavenly Father, just as Adam and Eve knew it. How does the Old Testament say it? They commune, there's a translation, it says they communed with God.
Sometimes I'm thinking we're missing a book in, in the first few books.
Oh, what would be in that book, Renata?
Well, where does Satan come from? Later on, later on, we hear, I saw Satan fall.
Yeah, right, right.
Why, why do we not know this in the beginning? This has come...
Yeah, it comes later, yeah.
I had a call one night from somebody in an argument with, I don't know who, remember who it was, and said, well, what does it say that in the Bible? And, uh, I had to get my, my study Bible, I didn't find it.
Yeah.
And I thought, yeah, I can see why they worry about that, because it doesn't say in the beginning.
That's right.
Satan was there.
Satan was all sudden, there, yeah.
So the Bible flashes back just like the movie.
Very good, Larry.
You must watch this last night, Larry.
Just on the weekend, I'd seen it years and years ago.
My memory has failed me.
That's, yeah.
Actually, would have to see that movie several times now.
Well, that's just that I've seen it a couple of times too, so it helps. Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking back to, I can't, I was trying to find the verse again, in Revelation, that I think Moira read, where it talks about us being in the tent and being sheltered from the sun, which is part of the original creation. Quite then interesting because it was good, day and, day and, daytime and evening. And yet here in Revelation, they say, but we will be in the tent, sheltered from the sun and sheltered from the heat. So what does the sun in Revelation represent? Because if it's, it can't be representing the son of creation prior to the fall.
If we needed to be protected from it.
If we need to be protected from it. Or is that, I don't know, is that the purity of the sun prior to the fall? But I mean, we're also talking in heaven. I have this, there's a teeny bit of, of, not contradiction, but...
See, and that's the thing, when, when you're dealing with symbolic language...
Yeah, that's, that's what I asked, what is the sun represented in that verse? Asked it.
Right, so sometimes with an analogy, so you know, you make the comparison between this and that object. And we all know about metaphors and similes and...
And it probably isn't reattentive.
Right, and that's right. And allegorical language, sometimes there's not a one-to-one connection. And you have to be careful that you're not reading into it when you want it to say. You'll have to let the scriptures speak for themselves. There's a good, great desire to make it all work. But sometimes you look hang. And the, the people that understand that the best are Jewish rabbis. Oh man, they love it when you can't figure it out. They'll ask you question and question and question and they'll answer a question. And Jesus did that all the time. The Pharisees and scrubs would come to him, they'd ask him a question, well, what do you say? What, what kind of learning, Larry, what do you call that kind of learning?
Socratic.
Socratic learning. And it drives people nuts with that. I know when I, when I teach confirmation, I do that all the time. And kids look at me, like I, I say to them, um, here's the question. And we talk about it, and five minutes into the discussion, alright, um, can you just tell us the answer so we can keep going?
Yeah, because you know it.
Well, but I don't wanna tell them the answer, I want the light bulb to go on.
The journey is more important than the answer.
Yeah, and I've seen that light bulb go on in comfort, and in Bible classes, sometimes even in church. The light goes on and people have that aha moment, and you know they're never gonna forget it. They're gonna remember it forever. So, um, we will walk with God in the garden. David looked forward to that moment. He described it in Psalm sixteen, verse eleven. So let's turn to Psalm sixteen, verse eleven.
He was on his knees. Oh my goodness.
Oh man, tired of those already.
He... Sixteen?
Sixteen, verse eleven.
You've made known to me the path of life. You will fill me with joy in your presence, with eternal pleasures at your right hand.
That's a perfect, um, image of what heaven will be. Will be in the presence of God, and there will be eternal pleasures, whatever that means, at your right hand. And you notice this is all vague, right? What does that all mean? I don't know what that's gonna look like. So I wonder, you know, um, we'll be in a collective heaven, but it's also individual. So the, the body of Christ on earth is the church. And we all know that in the church, there are many different parts. First Corinthians twelve, you know, some are the eyes, you know, all that kind of stuff. So you end up with this idea of the eternal pleasures at your right hand. Who knows what that's gonna be? I don't know. And so that's where, um, to come back to the nurses during the Civil War, that's what they were trying to get at, then. And so now we have this view of heaven. Cause right, this is the only part that we've seen so far that talks about anything remotely related to what we'll experience in heaven. Who knows what those pleasures are gonna be? I don't know. So you have those nurses telling those soldiers that it will be paradise, it will be a beautiful place, there will be no more pain and suffering, um, it's gonna be filled with joy. Which for the soldiers of that era, of any era, pretty good. Comfort and all of that. Cause what they were going through, you know, you've seen movies, I think, um, even in Gone with the Wind, there's a scene somewhere, if I remember you, of Scarlett or, is it Scarlett that's a nurse in a hospital? I can't remember.
Talk about Florence Nightingale?
No.
I don't think, I think it's the sister.
In the movie?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I don't think it's Scarlett.
Right.
No, I don't think she, it was, was her sister in the movie or something?
Right, Scarlett would not have been a nurse. I don't think she had the personality, the compassion that was needed. She was a little bit more self-centered. But there was that other character who maybe, yeah, you know, was able to provide the care and comfort that was so needed for the soldiers going through so much horrible stuff. So what we've seen so far, um, this movie, you know, talks a little bit about, what these heavens might be like. Um, but I wanted to use this as a springboard to talk about all of these subjects because, you know, as we're going through this study. So next week, we'll, we'll really open up the floodgates, talk about heaven. Um, and then a week after that, um, two weeks after that, we'll talk about hell. And two weeks after that, we'll talk about the order in which our entrance to heaven happens. So, um, you have homework for next week. Read the book of Revelation and we'll study it a little bit more. And see what else you can find in your study bibles about heaven. Talk amongst your friends about what heaven might be like.
So then you're gonna touch on the New Jerusalem?
Yes, all of that will come up. Because, now that you mention it, um, you know, it's... And you will, we'll take a little bit of, um, study of how to study the Bible based on the kind of literature you're looking at. Revelation is one of the books that deals with, um, the end times, the apocalypse as it were. And so you, there are things that you don't take literally in that book because they're not meant to be. So for example, you know, I think it's the Jehovah Witnesses, they have a problem. Cause only a hundred and forty-four thousand are gonna make it, that's it.
Huge problem.
That's a big old, big old problem.
Well, and so Catholics, because of purgatory.
Yeah.
Or new level of, is that one of the levels of hell or?
So Dante, actually, in Dante's Inferno includes, you know, the trip through hell, the trip through purgatory, and then, only then, does he go to paradise. So even back then, the idea of, yeah, purgatory, crazy. And by the way, and you know that the, the whole notion of purgatory is not biblical, it's not there.
Now, is it, like, one of the books that the Catholic Bible has the...
The Apocrypha.
Apocrypha, yeah, so is it referenced in there? I've never read the Apocrypha.
It's not, um, it's only obliquely mentioned as kind of a, a reference, a hint. And from that, the medieval Catholic Church developed a whole doctrine of purgatory.
Because, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No.
Go, I was about to say, is it something that, I don't know, kinda hijack the discussion here, but, um, is it, my understanding is that in, if you're, uh, believing Catholic, the idea is that basically no Catholic will end up in hell, they will get to purgatory, then boop, serve the time, and pop out in heaven. Hell is, is reserved for the rest of us.
Yeah.
That are not believing in the church, the way the Catholic faith presents Christianity.
Who are not in the arms of the Catholic Church, is the way they would say.
I'm gonna ask my sister friends.
I could ask my nephews, but I'm not going to.
Well, I'm gonna ask nuns.
Oh, Dante, yeah, that's...
I have a, a friend.
That would be interesting.
She's a historian.
Yes, yeah, that, that would take a deeper tube, the, the evolution of the belief.
Yeah, I think things have changed over time.
Oh, they have, absolutely.
Depending.
Absolutely.
Right.
Right, my nephews believe, didn't know believe in, in anything, uh, post Vatican II. So everything pre-Vatican, I can't remember.
Vatican II was nineteen sixty-seven.
So nothing, they, they wanna practice their faith, or they belong to the sect that practices priests.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, a lot, a lot of Catholics didn't.
So Mel Gibson, you'll recall, did The Passion of the Christ. He's a member of a Catholic order called the Trinitine, who go back even further than Vatican II, Vatican I, way back to medieval Catholicism. And back then, the idea of purgatory was a well, and you'll recall, Renata, when we did the ninety-five theses. So I, God bless the Peace Circle Bible study. They, they said, can we do a study on the ninety-five theses of Martin Luther?
Took about ninety-five weeks?
Sorry? It took...
Half a year.
No, we, I thought it was a two-year deal.
Yeah, cause if you're doing one a week, that's just about two years.
Well, yeah.
Every other week and not, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, we didn't, yeah, we didn't meet every week, we met every other week. But their patience was spectacular because I learned a ton of stuff, including the whole bizarre world of medieval Catholic theology when it comes to purgatory and works righteousness. And, and it's no wonder that Dante's Inferno comes because it's a study of what happens when you do wrong. And how do you move out of the circles of hell? And what is a fire, right? But it's, that's, you know, so it's not just hell, but purgatory now. So, and you know, I'll be curious to see what your, your nun friends say. Cause like, like I said, I mean, there's the old school Catholics that are still around, that still believe in purgatory. Remember, Renata, that Bible, that one time you showed the video of the Catholic priest?
Young guy, good-looking young guy.
There we go, see, I was waiting for that, every time I mention it, that's the first thing that comes out.
What a waste.
Yes, yeah. And one of the comments was, such eye candy.
He just looks good in black, that's all.
Yeah. So, and yeah, he was a young guy, that was my point, he was a young guy, talking like purgatory is a real... and yeah, he was a young guy. That was my point. He was a young guy, talking like purgatory is a real thing. And he actually says, this is all biblical and I got the proof. And then he quotes that oblique passage in some part of the Apocrypha. Maybe ask your nun friends about that too.
And like, I'm curious now too, because my nephews make a point of spending time going to uh Catholic cemeteries to pray for the deceased, pray them out of purgatory.
Yeah.
And so is that, is that common practice or is that older?
Forty days, I don't, you know, all our sister, because she's, she's uh the story, she's ninety. She was my teacher.
What order is she?
Sin.
Oh, yeah.
And they're, you know, they're quite acumenical, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
And I saw her quite.
Well, that's Jenna. This is sister. She was, our sister also was our teacher. And she's on the River Rhine. Oh, no, she's homeless, she's up now.
We're going to the River Rhine tomorrow. No, Thursday, Thursday. Okay, so this whole, so just to give you a preview, so next time we meet, two weeks, um seven o'clock. And I'll make the changes.
Yeah, seven is good for me.
Yeah.
That's what it says. Anyway.
Yeah, I thought, I thought two, two hours and then I never agreed.
Yeah, no, yeah.
It's fine, didn't miss that.
So when we meet next time, we'll get into a more deep view of.
This wasn't deep?
View of heaven, sorry, of heaven. Um and I'm gonna show a few more clips of the movie. Um hopefully you'll get a chance to see it. There's lots of ways to do it. Somebody, um Joyce Thurston asked me, but I thought she might be here today too. But Joyce asked me, how can she see it? So do you have a DVD player? Okay, I have a copy of it. I can let you borrow it. Or if you want, you can go to YouTube and rent it for five bucks from them.
Yeah, or Prime too.
Or or Prime has it?
Prime for five bucks.
We have one coming in from the library.
Oh.
It was supposed to arrive today, but we checked this afternoon, they hadn't gotten it yet.
Right, right.
But due to the next year, so we shouldn't.
Right, right, that, yeah. And so when you have it, um you may wanna watch the alternate ending. Cause we're gonna, I'm gonna show it at some.
There's an alternate ending?
Yeah, there's, yeah. Um and well, I'll I'll just tell you um what that alternate ending is in case we don't get to see it. But it explores the whole notion of reincarnation.
Oh.
Right, because that is definitely.
It's kind of mentioned a few times during the movie itself. But they go into full-on reincarnation.
Now, okay, tell me, does the ending have the couple as children again?
You guys are gonna see it soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
That's the alternate?
No, that's the real ending.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, the real ending is um the, yeah, the mist. Uh that was interesting.
Yeah, because that reincarnation thing is mentioned just about as soon as he gets to
Right.
To the afterlife.
So the 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 alternate ending starts with the birth of, I can't remember which, oh, oh, is it Chris or is it? I don't remember. Um and then it goes into full-born reincarnation in a global experience, so.
It's a stranger.
I know.
I mean, but eh as a whole, it follows a more Judeo-Christian path than, you know, some of the eastern religions do. You know, with having distinct heaven and hell and based on, well, in this case, works more than anything.
So yeah, then next week will be heaven, a fuller um study of heaven. The week, the time after that will be a fuller study of hell. Yeah, and then probably in purgatory too. Um and then the last session will be, um what are the steps that happen after we die? What happens? So we've got four minutes left. Any other final closing thoughts or questions that we didn't cover that you were hoping we'd cover in such a weird movie?
Over already, I have a twenty.
Sorry?
Because you started at seven, remember? We're over already.
Right, we started seven, we're gonna go till eight thirty.
Seven thirty?
Seven.
Sorry?
I thought you said seven nine.
We start at seven.
We start at seven.
And we go till eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Right.
Okay.
But if we, sorry.
But no, never mind.
Yeah, we started at seven, we go till eight thirty. That's what we're gonna do.
What it said on the calendar was um seven thirty to eight thirty or nine.
Yeah.
I think the bulletin said seven to nine.
That's what the bulletin said, seven to nine.
Oh, boy, I, boy, I gotta fix that. We were always going to go seven till eight thirty. Man, I must not have had coffee those days. I, you know, no, I'm not gonna forget now. Wow. So the guaranteed, we can never go more than an hour. Start at seven, finish at eight thirty. Hour and a half, you start losing all concentration, as clearly I have done.
That's what worries me, it's in the church, so an hour and a half.
Yeah, we don't go two hours. No, 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 no. So um we end up, um yeah, so at the end, we'll talk about that. You can um go on the internet and I tried to see if there was an actual study guide for this. There are a number of um study guides that they wanted, there was a paywall. I didn't feel like, and what I mean by paywall is, or not paywall, um a study guide. Remember Kohl's Notes?
Yes.
Okay, so Kohl's Notes always had, you know, the summaries.
Through high school?
Yeah, pretty much.
Wish I destroyed my student copies.
Um but I I couldn't find any good ones that I didn't have to pay for. I don't feel like.
Yeah, there's the various video ver- video summaries of what was going on. That's as long as the movie is, I'm just, just watch the movie again.
Yeah. One website that really is very informative in terms of just the movie itself is IMDB dot com, the Internet Movie Database. IMDB dot com. So you type in the name of the movie, it'll show you the movie, it'll show you all the stars in it. It'll give you trivia, um trailers, um all kinds of information about the movie. It just, it's a really good handy, like a reference.
Yeah, for any obscure movie, you know, contemporary movie. I can't remember, do they also do documentaries?
TV shows, doc, yes, documentaries, yeah. If it's on film, it's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really good, IMDB dot com. And I'm always amazed at how how much information there is, period.
And and you click on an actor and you can see their entire list of of uh works. What such and such a movie, that's my problem, I don't remember titles, but I remember an actor might be in it, so find the actor. And oh, yeah, here's their, that's the movie, yeah. Like where Chris Waltz, Christopher, Christoph, Christoph Waltz plays, plays sort of the devil in a pretty recent movie too, and he ends up working for, what is he called, the accountant, something like that.
Oh, you mean The Apprentice?
Is it The Apprentice?
That is a movie.
Yeah, yeah, but I think it's the accountant.
It is a movie.
Almost wasn't.
I'm laughing because you associated the word hell with an accountant. Oh, man, that's terrible.
I was associating the word hell. The devil.
Yeah. Alright, anything else? Alright, let's finish. Let's end with a prayer. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, thank you for a very good discussion about heaven, about this movie. Help us to understand and to take comfort and joy in the fact that you've already set aside a place for us and that you will be there when we arrive and that we will see you face to face. And that we can know that our Redeemer lives and that we will see him in the flesh. Be with us tonight as we go our way. Give us a night of restful peace that tomorrow we can rise up, remember our baptism and go about our business in the joy of the Lord. We pray these things in the name of Jesus our Savior, amen. Alright, thank you for coming.